We'll call a meeting to order, and at this time I'll have Anita read the warrant, please.
To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Elementary School Auditorium at 65 Glenwood Road in said Rutland on Thursday, the fourteenth day of November 2019, at six o'clock in the evening, then and there to vote on the following articles.
At this time, will we stand and salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight for our special town meeting. Typical house rules, everybody's got an orange card that should be sitting out in front of us, our guests are over to our left. Just so people understand what's going on is, the people to my right are the Finance Board, as usual, directly to my left is Town Clerk, I believe the person beside it looks like somebody important, Town Council tonight, but that's not. And then we have Mike, Town Administrator, with us, and then the Finance Selectmen at the far end of the table. So, let's get started and get underway. If you're gonna speak to me, to the, on the floor, please come up to the, to the mic like normal and state your name and address, and we'll go from there. Scott Davis is Assistant Town Moderator, so if I was late, he was gonna step in, so thank you for that. Moving on to Article One. Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money for available funds, including free cash, to the town's stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $48,100 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
This is motion received, support.
Second.
Motion made, and second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Lou Conacchili, eighteen Blueberry Lane. So I don't have to jump up here all the time, can you tell us why $48,000 is going from one to the other, what the purpose is? That would avoid people like me delaying this meeting by coming up here and asking the question. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. To answer Mr. Conacchili's question, per the town's financial policies that were passed in 2016 and went into effect in 2017, it is five percent of our certified free cash, not including that from free cash, which came from the water and sewer enterprise accounts, that is being deposited, or looking to be transferred from free cash into the stabilization and the capital stabilization account, and into the OPEB account, one percent of free cash. In, again, in accordance with the goal of the financial policies to make a good faith effort to increase that.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds, including free cash, to the town's capital stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $48,100 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion made, and second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Three. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds, including free cash, to the town's OPEB trust fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $9,620 from free cash to the town's other post-employment benefit OPEB trust fund.
Second.
Motion is made, and second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Five. To see if the town will vote to rescind its, whoa. To see if the town will vote, moving on to Article Four, I apologize, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds, including free cash, to add to the funding source approved for the fiscal year 2020, operating budget approved under Article Nine of May 11th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, as may be necessary or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $150,000 from free cash to add to the funding sources approved for the fiscal year 2020, operating budget approved under Article Nine of the May 11th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, and second, recommendation of the Finance.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those in attendance, if you received a sheet at the door that looks with a chart on the backside of it, on the front side it has our stabilization history, I just want to point to the top corner. This was voted upon in, at the May Annual Town Meeting this year when we went over the other budget articles. However, upon review of the votes that were taken, the Department of Revenue informed us that since the words "free cash" were not explicitly stated, even though that they were handed out, handouts were said, that specifically $150,000 of free cash was to be used to fund the budget, that we would have to revote this article to actually transfer that $150,000 of free cash. This isn't redoing, this isn't adding on to what was passed at the Annual Town Meeting in May, this is a correction that the Department of Revenue has asked the town to make, following review of what was voted on at the May Town Meeting. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on this article?
Lou Conacchili, in Blueberry Lane. So, if I heard you correctly, we voted in May, I was at the meeting, but the Department of Revenue said what we voted was not correct? And so now we're adding the money, so what's the $150,000 going for? One specific line item? A group of line items? And is that gonna take place the rest of the way down the line? If I just knew where the money was going and what actually took place, okay?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Mr. Conacchili. The, what the issue that the Department of Revenue notified the town was, was the wording of the motion for the funding of municipal departments did not include the words "free cash" in the motion. So because of that, the Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue has asked that the town revote to appropriate from free cash the $150,000 that was intended to be budget revenue for the funding of municipal departments. Again, at this meeting, to correct that error so that the budget does not have a revenue shortfall of $150,000.
I've been to just about every annual town meeting since I moved into this town in 1973. I was 11 years old at the time. But anyway, I've been to just about every town, annual town meeting. This is the first time I've ever heard of this taking place. And it bothers me, and it's not a trust issue with you folks, but at the annual town meeting, we had, what, 300 people, 400 people? Now tonight, we have citizens who are here tonight on this bris night, but what are we, 100? Maybe less than 100? And it just bothers me that we're now voting, which we probably should do, a large sum of money with a smaller amount of people when we had a big crowd back in May. So I would hope that we do due diligence next time around and we don't make this mistake again. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Five. To see if the town will vote to rescind its February 18th, 1992 acceptance of the provisions of GLC 44, Section 53 F and a half, for the purpose of creating a water enterprise account effective June 30th, 2019, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Five as written in the warrant.
Motion made, and seconded, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends the town vote in favor of this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You've got a lot of discussion here tonight, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those in attendance, if you see the other handout that was passed out, water sewer information, I just wanted to give a brief update as to the next two, Article Five and Article Six, to make a clarification. At the May Town Meeting, this is another one that came with the review from the Department of Revenue, Article 11 of the May Town Meeting voted to create a new combined enterprise account for water and sewer. That was passed. What the Department of Revenue then informed the Town Accountant's Office and myself is that the motion did not rescind the previously existing enterprise accounts. So at this point in time, the town has three existing enterprise accounts. The former water enterprise account, which has a balance of zero in it because it fell to free cash. The former sewer enterprise account, which has a balance of zero in it because that also fell to free cash. And the new combined water sewer enterprise account. The Department of Revenue has notified the town that since the town meeting voted in May to create the new combined enterprise accounts, Mass. General Law dictates that we must keep that account for a minimum of three years, but they will, the Department of Revenue will not allow the town to set the tax rate for the upcoming year until the town votes to rescind the two previous enterprise accounts. So that is what Article Five and Article Six are. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to Article Six. To see if the town, yes, motion carried. To see if the town will vote to rescind its April 26th, 2010 acceptance of the provisions of GL, Section 44, Section 53 and a half, creating a sewer enterprise account effective June 30th, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move we approve Article Six as written in the warrant.
This is motion made, and seconded, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to pay the outstanding fourth quarter bill from the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Sewer Transportation and Treatment dated June 3rd, 2019, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate the sum of $213,477.09, the fourth quarter bill for the Department of Conservation, Recreation for Sewer and Transportation and Treatment dated the June 3rd of 2019.
Motion made, and seconded, I'd like a clarification, Ian, if you don't mind. I believe you read 213.
It is correct.
My motion received says 211.
Yes.
Okay, so I stand corrected that Ian's, what he read is 100% correct. I was wrong again tonight. So, a motion has been made and seconded, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Joe Becker, eighteen Crestview Drive. Can I just have clarification? I don't know that the motion included exactly where that money is coming from.
That's coming from free cash.
What free cash?
Certified free cash that we have.
Water and sewer, or general?
It's coming, it's from the, all the water and sewer money was put back into free cash, was coming from that money.
So water and sewer certified free cash?
Free cash.
That's all part of one. That's probably in the motion?
It's, it's actually, everything was put into total free cash.
Mr. Moderator, if I, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, with the creation of the new combined enterprise account, the Department of Revenue took anything that was in balance of the water and the sewer and lumped that into general fund free cash as those accounts closed out. So there is no water free cash or sewer free cash. What we've done is account for that on our own end in the list of certified general fund free cash. So this is coming from money that was in water and sewer, general, water and sewer free cash on our end, but on the official paper from the Department of Revenue, it's in general fund free cash.
If I could, through the moderator, have a follow-up. So that makes sense from an accounting perspective, I guess for an ongoing perspective, at what time does the balance of what would be certified water and sewer free cash really enter into the water and sewer enterprise account?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Eight. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I would also like to say that Town Council has just informed me this will have to be a nine tenths vote as it is a bill for my previous fiscal year.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? If it's unanimous, then we're okay. If it's not, then we will count, but let's, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. We will count. Mr. Davis, would you be kind enough to count the right-hand side? Mr. Sullivan, would you be kind enough to count the left-hand side? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards and wait to be counted by the counters, please.
Is it a good and a half? It's maybe our first nine tenths.
All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. The motion does carry. It's 66 in favor, two opposed. Nine tenths or greater in the past. Moving on to Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, a sum of money to the water sewer enterprise account for the fiscal year 2020, salaries and expenses, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $367,401.91 from free cash to the water sewer combined enterprise account.
A motion is made, and seconded, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, uh, yeah, all those in favor, please signify by raising their cards. Same sign, those opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to Article number nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $3,018,300 for the water sewer infrastructure upgrades, including all incidentals and related costs, and as a funding, therefore to be authorized, the treasurer with approval of the select board to borrow such sum under the pursuit of MGL, Section 44, Section Eight, or take any action, or any other enabling authority, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $3,018,300 for water and sewer infrastructure upgrades, including all related costs, and as funding, therefore, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum of money pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. And further, to authorize the select board to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or loans in connection herewith, to enter into all agreements, execute any and all documents, and take all action necessary to carry out this project.
Motion made, and seconded, recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends, recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number one, what are we gonna borrow for, 20, 30 years?
Twenty, correct. Becky?
Yes.
Twenty.
And what's the estimated charge that's gonna come to us on sewer and water? What can we see our bill going up by over the next 20 years?
That is an excellent question, Mr. Conacchili. The, that has caused, that I've actually received many calls about in my office. The rate increase of 50% in sewer and 10% in water that was passed by the Board of Public Works in July included those payments in that rate. The reason being is because the rate study that the town had commissioned by the Abrahams Group back in the spring said that there were two plans for the town to do to meet all of the infrastructure repairs and upgrades that it needs to do to reduce its I&amp;I. One was to plan to borrow, and the other was not to plan to borrow. The plan to borrow had a 50% rate increase in sewer, a 10% in water, which the Board of Public Works passed. The plan to not go forth and ask the town meeting to borrow this amount was an 80% increase in sewer and a 25% increase in water to cover the cost. So it's already built into the existing rate that was recently billed out to the town.
Okay, so the rate we have now is the rate we'll have going forward.
Yes, sir.
Now, another question. I assume all of this infrastructure repair was determined by the work done by those who came through and looked at our sewer lines and our water lines?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's their projected, if we repair all this stuff, what's the projection? Are we good for the next 15, 20 years? I'm 77, so I'm not really worried about 20 years from now, but I am worried, I am worried about 10 years from now. I plan to be around for another 10 years, as best I can. So I'd like to know what the projection is. Am I gonna be paying more money? I may decide to move back to Worcester. And a lot of people would be happy about that.
Mr. Moderator, if it's okay, I'd like to ask Director Buckley to answer that question. Thank you.
I would assume no one has any objection to a non-resident to speak on our behalf?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. So to answer his question, we have a five-year plan proposed for both water and sewer, and then we'll regroup after five years. The bulk of the water repairs is to address all of the breaks we've had in town. We had a bunch of breaks in the inward road area, probably five breaks in two weeks. And when I went back and talked to the staff, it's been a historical problem, so much so that the, my predecessor had hired Weston Sampson to go through and do a design for that area. That area was roughly two, two and a half million to replace. We took that cost and spread it out over five years so that we could start doing roughly 1,000 miles of water, 1,000 miles, 1,000 feet of water main annually. So the goal, so we wanna spend 400,000 annually on water, 200,000 annually on sewer. The focus of the five-year plan that I laid out is basically to cut down on water breaks. That's our goal. On the sewer side, all of our money is focused on II for the most part, and that affects our bottom line. So, and what that means in plain English is if we get rainwater and groundwater out of our sewer mains, we don't have to pay as much to pump and treat it. And that's what raised our sewer costs in the first place. So to answer Mr. Conacchili's question, we're gonna go after the water breaks we've had, we're gonna go after the II that's driven our costs up, and then regroup in five years.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
So, am I correct, in, Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, sorry. Am I correct that this will be paid for by only the users, only water and sewer users? Okay, so if, if a house only has water and not sewer, how is that allocated?
It's a good question. Historically, the town, when they've done big capital improvements, they put it on as like one line item. So like the tank charge you currently have, the capital improvements going forward are actually built into the rate. So they're gonna pay the same water rate, and we're not gonna figure out exactly how much of the water, you know, how much goes towards capital. That's not part of it, it's built into the rate itself. Does that answer your question? Okay, so try, what?
Yeah. Thanks.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I guess my question is, if you only have water, you only pay for water. And now that we've combined these two accounts, the, I don't know how you.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. No, DOR requires us to keep two separate budget sheets. Right.
Okay, so the improvements to sewer will be allocated to sewer-only users, and if it's water, it'll be allocated to people who use water?
Yeah, that's what it requires.
Okay, thank you.
Joe Becker, Crestview Drive. So I guess that begs the question, what is the split of the 3 million, just over 3 million dollars? What is the borrowing for the water, and what is the borrowing for the sewer? Is it a 50/50 split, or is it a 60/40?
No, it's, it's just like I described. They're borrowing all the money at once, but only 200,000 annually is going to sewer and 400,000 annually is going to water. So water, probably pay a higher chunk of that money because they need more work done. But we're not gonna have two separate notes, just water, just sewer. It's all one lump sum, and then sewer pays their portion accordingly.
It's about two to one, 2 million to 1 million?
I just wonder how is this gonna affect the people who have their own well and septic system, tax-wise? Are we, are we gonna be taxed for this, really? You promise? Gotcha.
Can you state your address, ma'am? You stated your name, but you didn't tell us where you live.
Elaine Munster. Because I didn't see you guys. You must have put in my, my sentence. There you go.
Is there any other discussion?
One project.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? This is a two-thirds vote. If it's not unanimous, we will take a tally. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So it passes by two-thirds. Moving on to Article 10. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $1,920 to the account of 001-210-5110-00. Please chief wages or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,920. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,920 from free cash to account number 001-210-5110-000. Police chief's wages.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends the vote, the town vote favorable this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Nine of the May eleventh, two thousand and nineteen Annual Town Meeting, approving the operating budget by making adjustments to certain line items either as corrections or due to unforeseen circumstances, all for the purpose and for the amounts set forth below, and as funding, therefore, or appropriate such sums for available funds, including free cash. Line item number 001-192-5200-005, public safety purchase service of $6,100, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,100 from free cash to account number 001-192-5200-005, public safety purchase services.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Nine of the May eleventh, two thousand and nineteen Annual Town Meeting, approving the operating budget by making adjustments or certain items either as corrections or due to unforeseen circumstances for all the purposes in the amount set forth, as a funding, therefore, appropriate such sums of available funds, including free cash. Line item 001-422-5530-000, highway construction or maintenance supplies of $13,068.52, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate the sum of $13,068.52 from free cash to account number 001-422-5530-000, the highway construction and maintenance supplies.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $18,468, available funds, including free cash, to replace the front walkway of the community center, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $18,468 from free cash to replace the front walkway at the community center, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, including free cash, a sum of money to hire three additional firefighters, and for such purposes, to add the amount as shown to the following line items. 231-5120, ambulance wage, wages, the sum of $19,983.60. 001-914-5100-000, health insurance, the sum of $5,621.51, and 001-911-5100-000, Medicare, the sum of $1,788.53, as a town matching proportion of the federal safer grant for the fire department, for the sum of $27,393.64, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to approve Article Fourteen as written in the warrant.
Second.
A motion's been made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Are any of these three new hires to replace retirees or anticipated retirees? I know we voted in May to extend one firefighter. He was sixty-five, and I believe there was at least one other firefighter that just retired from, so are any of these positions for the, or are these above and beyond those positions?
Could you please state your name and address?
Rachel Dolan Wareroad.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to ask Chief Knight to speak, even though he is not a town resident.
If there's no objection, being a non-town resident, Mr. Knight will speak on behalf of that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, to answer the question, currently, the fire department is staffed with forty-five on-call firefighter EMS personnel. They are part-time individuals. The two that you had mentioned for retiring are part-time. They are not full-time staff. Currently, right now, we have seven full-time firefighters, running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Back in two thousand and one, the town voted a staffing plan for the fire department that consisted of nine full-time firefighters. Here we are, basically eighteen years later. This federal grant we applied for is paying seventy-five percent of it. We're finally getting to that level of staffing that was voted back in two thousand and one.
As a follow-up, with the population we currently have, are you saying that we are not fully staffed according to what the state recommends for our population?
The staffing study that was done in two thousand and one, the national average is one point three full-time equivalents, based on the population that we have. With this additional staffing, will only bring us to one point two-three. So we are still understaffed.
Is there any other discussion?
Michelle Van Reed, Charnakil Road. I'm not against it, but if we're paying for it out of free cash for this year, shouldn't it be part of the budget for next year, like, because free cash is a one-time hit, right?
Mr. Moderator, the answer to the question is yes. This will be something that will have to be roped into the regular budget process next year. The grant requires that we start this staffing process by February first of this year. So that is why, and we didn't anticipate to get the grant nor plan for its matching portion at the last year's budget. So that is why it's coming from free cash. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $13,309.08 from available funds, including free cash, to the account number 001-220-5110-000, fire chief's salary, such sum to be expended only in the event that the town of Okam and the town of Rutland agrees to provisions to regionalize chief services through the remainder of the current fiscal year, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Fifteen as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote in favor of this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify for those who are here, the, this is coming from an intermunicipal agreement payment from the town of Okam to the town of Rutland. This is not coming from free cash. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Becker has asked a question by not going to the podium, but.
So the question is, if I heard, I think I heard in the motion, I might have misheard, that it said from free cash, so that motion be revised, so the wording comes from the correct funding source through the intermunicipal agreement?
As stated in the article, it said from available funds, including free cash.
The motion, that's the article.
No, the motion just.
They, they mimic me. They didn't make a motion over there. They said the motion was as read.
As written in the warrant.
But doesn't a motion have to be specific as to the funding source?
It should be.
That's my point.
I'm just telling you what was said, Joe.
So I'll make a, to Mr. Becker's point, I'll make a motion to amend the original motion, which simply referenced the article. I will amend it to move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $13,309.08 from available funds to account number 001-220-5110, fire chief's salary, such sum to be expended only in the event that the town of Okam and the town of Rutland agree to the provision of regionalized chief services through the remainder of the current fiscal year, or, and I'll be finished there.
Does this amendment receive support? Okay, now I can allow a discussion on the amendment.
Just, just a follow-up on that. So to me, available funds doesn't sound very specific either. Shouldn't this be a raise and appropriate the sum? You're raising and appropriating an additional thirteen-nine within the budget for that line item. I understand the funding source is going to be through receipts, through the intermunicipal agreement, but, but I would think this would be a raise and appropriate number, if you're not taking it from free cash or some source like that. You're raising and appropriating it to pay it out of the general operating budget.
Mr. Moderator, town council has advised that that would affect, affect the tax rate.
You haven't said it yet. You haven't said the tax rate yet. Sorry, Dave, I promised.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to ask Town Accountant Dan Haynes to speak, even though he is not a town resident.
If there's no objection, Dan is the accountant for the town, I believe.
Thank you, Joe. Great question. Yes, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three, all revenue that the town receives have to, has to be general fund revenue unless it's a, there's a statute to, that affects that, revolving fund statute. So yes, it's general fund revenue, and we should raise and appropriate from taxation. The offset will be that revenue. So it won't affect, yeah, right, will not affect the tax bill because we're going to rate, we're going to put that revenue on the other side.
Is there any other discussion? You're working on the amendment. You already have one amendment on the floor.
May I withdraw my amendment?
I believe you can. If, if the first and the second chooses to withdraw, then I'll let you withdraw.
I withdraw my amendment.
I withdraw the second.
I would like to make a new amendment.
Okay.
All right.
Should you ask Joe first if it's right?
I, I'm going to stare at Joe as I read this. Actually, no, I actually need to read this. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,309.08 from available funds to account number 001-220-5110-000, fire chief's salary, such sum to be expended only in the event that the town of Okam and the town of Rutland agree to the provision of regionalized chief services through the remainder of the current fiscal year, or take any action. No, I'm going to leave that out yet again.
Second.
A motion is made, and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Becker? So that's an amendment on the floor. So if there's any questions or comments on the amendment at this time, I'd like to take those. I don't need to get a recommendation on the amendment from the finance, do I? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? If not, I'd like to vote on the amendment, and only the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we will have to, is there any discussion on the amendment with the motion? If not, we will vote on the motion with the amendment, which really doesn't change much, but just for legality purposes, we have to do that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion with the amendment, please state, raise your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate for available funds, including free cash, the sum of $8,200 for the purpose of hiring a temporary employee for the community hall for no more than twelve weeks, including all incidentals and related costs, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $8,200 from free cash to hire a temporary employee for community hall for no more than twelve weeks, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Eric Van Reed, two-thirty, Charnakil. Just a clerical thing, the line item for this on the free cash spreadsheet is up by seventy-three thousand.
Mr. Moderator, the comma's in the wrong spot. Eight thousand two hundred dollars. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, please, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Nine of May two thousand and eleven, May eleventh, two thousand and nineteen Annual Town Meeting, approving the operating budget by making adjustments to certain items either as corrections or due to unforeseen circumstances, all for the purposes and the amount set forth below, and as funding, therefore, to appropriate such sums from available funds, including free cash. Line number 001-122-5130-000, select board secretary's salary of $2,000, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,000 from free cash to account number 001-122-5130-000, select board secretary's wages.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $14,900 from free cash to undertake a traffic and design study for the intersection of Route sixty-eight and Watchuset Street, including any incidental or related expenses, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $14,900 to fund a traffic and design study of the intersection of Route sixty-eight and Watchuset Street, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask that the motion be amended to say $14,900.0 from free cash to fund a traffic and design study of the intersection, please. Thank you.
I don't believe you can do that.
I said I'd like to ask someone else to make that for me.
Oh. So why don't you let, talk to the person beside you, maybe?
Would I have to move to amend it?
David.
Motion to amend, motion eighteen. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $14,900 from free cash. from free cash to fund a traffic and design study of the intersection of Route 68 and Wachusett Street, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Does this amendment receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of voting on the amendment, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll go back to the original motion with the amendment, is there any discussion?
Good evening, Jennifer Plank, Jonathan Circle. Can you tell me what the basis is for that particular intersection? I mean, I know it's a dangerous, but in reference to so many others in town, what has made or deemed that to be where we're first starting?
Chair, Mr. Moderator? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've had three or four major accidents there this year, due to different problems with the design of the intersection. Director Buckley reached out to Tyon Bond Engineering, who specializes in traffic work, to see if there was a way to mitigate so we don't continue to have as severe accidents as we have on that intersection there. Director Buckley is here too, so if you have any other specific questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to do.
It seems like, I guess it's not a road that I traverse often, but it seems like it's, there's so many that seem to be of issue, that that seemed, because of the speed limit, it automatically seems like it's going to be a high traffic, or the severity is going to be much worse. So, I just wondered if there was, if that was the basis, or if there was other factors compared to other intersections in town.
If I may, I think you hit the nail on the head, Jen. The incidents that we tend to have at that intersection because of the high rate of speed of Route 68 tend to be very serious. So, despite the fact that I completely agree with you, we have multiple other intersections that need to have a look, a very long look at them, that absolutely is the location that unfortunately seems to engender the high-speed issues.
You're walking first, I'm just telling the older gentleman to start to move.
Mark Elbag, Glenwood Road. I'd just like to say, if we do put money towards a study, it's not necessarily going to actually fix anything. With two straight roads there, there's not a lot that can be done without spending a lot of money, I would think. So, I would think it would be more wise to put the money that we do have into maybe maintaining and paving some of the streets in town.
What he said was, he was, two straight roads, doing a study, he would prefer to see the money spent toward improving a road versus doing a study. Just restating it for the gentleman to hear.
Okay, recently, there was an accident at that intersection.
Name and address, please.
Stephen Sherman, Paddock Road. You knew that.
I did, but...
Recently, there was an accident at this intersection involving a six-year-old girl who will never be the same again. I would hope that you would vote this amount of money, which is small in comparison, to hopefully make sure that this didn't happen again.
Mr. Knackenley is moving first.
You do know your place. 68, we're friends, we're friends. 68 is a state road, is the state going to take part in any of this study? It would seem to me, the high-speed area is not Wachusett Street, our street, the high-speed area is 68. So, where are they involved in this study and actual redesigning that?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Director Buckley can correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but we maintain Route 68 as a town, even though it is a state numbered road, we take care of the...
Just, it's easier if you come to the mic, so everyone could hear you, please, Mr. Buckley. Sir.
Commissioner Buckley.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Sir, Commissioner.
Route 68 is a town road.
Please speak into the mic and face me, actually.
Route 68 is a town road. It's a numbered route, but it's still in the town's control. Really? Really.
Mike Sullivan Crawford wrote, to Mr. Elbag's point, I guess I'd kind of like to understand what the town's hopeful end game is. I agree with what he's saying, it's a dead straight road both ways, they're certainly never going to put a true traffic light there. I would suspect that the only thing that can be done is make the stop signs, you know, more obvious, such as those flashing ones that we now see around. If Mr. Buckley or anybody else has any other thoughts on, you know, I'm sure it's not going to become a traffic, you know, a true traffic light, so why not take the, whatever this money is, put it towards the flashing stop signs, and see what, you know, see how that works.
Mr. Buckley, do you have a, Commissioner Buckley, sir.
That's enough. The town of Rutland, DPW, has no formal engineering in-house.
Speak closer to the mic, please.
The town of Rutland, Department of Public Works, has no formal engineering in-house. The accident location was reviewed by myself, the police chief, the fire chief. We basically got out the state manuals for looking at how to sign roads, and everything met specification. At that point, to try and come up with a solution, we decided to call in an expert, and that's why we proposed this tonight. It's that simple.
Is there any other comments?
Well, I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I don't know whether the police chief is still here or not, but I'd be interested to hear from him. Does he expect something other, and I know he's not an engineer either, well, maybe he is an engineer, what does he expect this study to come up with short of, you know, very apparent stop signs?
Nick Monaco, police chief, 10 Welchav. Mr. Elbag, there's two straight roads with a stop sign, Joe said it too, the intersection, there's nothing wrong with the intersection, but something happens at that intersection, people make grave mistakes there. Like Mr. Sherman said, very serious accident involving a six-year-old. We're not engineers. Joe wants to hire an engineering company to see what we can do to make it better, what we can do to reduce serious accidents there. So, if there's something we can do to improve it, I'm hoping that this study will figure it out. I'd hate to just sit by and let them keep happening, so...
Lester Grace, Pleasantale Road. If you want to do a study, the four corners of 122 and Pleasantale Road is atrocious. I mean, there's going to be an accident there every month, and the traffic, it's unbelievable. This is what a study should be.
Is it? Mr. Knight, would you like to add about, I'm sure he's going to speak about the road or an accident or something? Please wait.
Mr. Moderator, through you, to answer the gentleman's question, yes, the intersection you did speak of has a higher volume of accidents, but the severity of accidents are much less. Wachusett Street and 68 are high-speed accidents. We have two high-speed intersections coming together. Wachusett Street is a 40 mile-an-hour zone, no one drives 40 miles an hour, they're doing 50, and they do not stop at the light, and it's going straight through the intersection. So, you have two potential 50 mile-an-hour vehicles hitting each other broadside, and that's the severity of accidents that we're having. The one at Pleasantale in Berry-Paxton, those are minor, small impact or small speed crashes that are happening there, not as severe, so we're trying to tackle the one that has a higher chance of loss of life.
Is there any other?
Again, Jennifer Plank, 9 Jonathan Circle. Is there federal grants? It seems like a great opportunity, that federal grants would be possible for a study of something like this, traffic patterns, feel like that would be something, has that been looked into, and there's nothing available for that?
To, Mr., thank you, Mr. Moderator. I asked that question flat out when I was in DC last month, there is currently nothing available for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there? Can Mr. Buckley go first, if you don't mind?
We did contact the state about trying to get some help to get that...
Closer.
We did contact the Commonwealth about trying to get that intersection evaluated, and we've yet to get a response. In, because we've had so many recent accidents, we decided to take more direct action. We got, back to 122, that actually is a state road, unlike 68.
Michael Votruba, 76 Campbell Street. I guess I'd really like to see money spent directly on the issue, not in design, if possible. I know there's a lot of intersections very similar to this intersection, there's probably some in Hubbardston on Route 68 that are similar, or elsewhere. I'd rather see money put into rumble strips, or lighted stop signs, or strobe light, instead of a blinking yellow light, maybe an additional strobe to that. I'd rather see the money go direct into that, and then into design engineering if it's not necessary.
Is there any other discussion?
Hi, I'm Nick Votruba, 12 Campbell Street. Coming off of Wachusett Street into 68, it's blinking yellow versus like how it's going yellow for the whole state road. I don't know if they should maybe make that blink red as well, versus it, you know, yellow means proceed with caution typically. I mean, I don't know if that's really real, but why not have it be red with red to help that factor? Because I feel like that could be misleading for people that just start driving through and think, you know, see one thing, not think about the other.
Is there any other discussion?
Elaine Munson, 1 Prospect Street. Now, this design, are you going to do this to all areas of Rutland, like the center of Rutland, where there's traffic back-to-back every morning, from 4:00 afternoon to 5:30 at night? You can't get off of Palmigusset. So, are you going to do a traffic circle there and see what you can do there? Or are you going to do the same thing they did down on Pleasantale and 122, and they put a blinking red light and caution light, and then turned around, put the speed limit up to 50 miles an hour, coming from Berry and from Paxton, from 40 miles to 50, at that intersection? So, I just want to know who's in charge of doing these intersections, and do something that is maybe sensible. Thank you.
Well, the article, the article that's in front of us now is just for that one intersection.
First of all, Pleasantale and 122, the year my husband had an accident, they had eight accidents that year. Then they put up the caution light. They, two weeks after the caution light, they put up the speed limit to 50 miles, both ways, just before four corners, and just before where they sell the cars. The speed limit is 50, just before the intersection. That makes my, the state of Massachusetts, a little on the bad side for me. And the same thing with this, with the center of Ma, of, coming off of...
Ma'am, we have to stay on topic here. You have valid concerns, just, we're talking about this other article. Are you going to talk about what she's talking about? Can we let this woman go first? Thank you.
Jean Grant, 2 Sycamore Drive. My main question is, does the study need to occur before we take any action? Because I know we keep talking about this, I cross over this four times a day, I can see both sides of this, a lot of it is common sense when you're crossing that road. But, my question is, must we have this study before action takes place? Like...
So, short answer, Jean, I guess the answer is probably not, we don't have to. And I can absolutely see the point of the people who are sitting here saying, my God, you've got this little bit of money, why not put it towards something concrete, quote, rather than a study? But I think the person who spoke before you probably gave us one of the best reasons to do the study, it's why the board went along with the recommendations of the director, why the FinCon did as well. In being able to finally find out from a professional standpoint what is wrong with that intersection, we can then move forward appropriately. Sometimes the signage, particularly the ones that we've been looking at, are very expensive, and we want to make sure we're moving in the right direction. The other thing is, that will open up the doors for us to use the information that we've gotten, and apply what we can to other difficult locations. And then finally, if grants do open up, either on a state or a federal level, we won't be eligible for them if we haven't proven out through a study that it's a location and an intersection that actually needs some help.
Matt Lavori, 28 Grisley Drive. Have we investigated?
Speak a little closer, please.
Have we investigated any options of grants related to distracting dri, distracted drivers? I know we're talking about an intersection here, but two things cause accidents, bad roads and bad drivers, and I suspect that you have a lot of distracted drivers.
Nick Monaco, police chief, to answer his question. We currently have a grant application with the state for traffic enforcement, part of which includes mobilizations for enforcement of distracted driving problems. To further answer the question, in the past two years, we've, I think we've increased, we've actually decreased accidents in town, probably 15% from 2017. Citations are up 50%, fines are up 75%. So, we are taking very active measures in enforcement, we're doing the best we can. We're bringing accidents down, but, like you said, this, this intersection is of concern.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. We will count. Would my two counters please assist? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards, and wait until you're counted, please. This is just majority vote, but it was close, and I wanted to make certain of it, please. All those opposed, raise your cards, please. This motion carries with 50 yeses, 29 noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $15,000 for the vision appraisal software upgrade, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $15,000 from free cash to fund the vision appraisal software upgrade, including all incidental and related expenses.
Motion been made and seconded, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes, raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 20, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $25,000 to upgrade computer systems in the town offices, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $25,000 from free cash to fund the upgrade to the computer, town computer systems, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, finance committee recommends the town vote favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 21, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, the sum of $41,146.75 to purchase a Ford F-250 truck with a plow attachment or equivalent, or take any action in relation thereto. or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $41,164.75 from free cash to purchase and equip a Ford F-250 truck with plow attachment or its equivalent for the Department of Public Works, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support? Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? While they checking the numbers. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? We have been given a green light to proceed with caution. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 22. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of $5,000 to purchase trees, including all incidentals or related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $5,000 from free cash to purchase trees, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance recommends favorably on this motion.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Please state your name and address.
Lou Carnacarroll, the 18 Blueberry Lane, and I have a bunch of trees in my backyard. I spent the last month raking leaves. I love trees. Why are we buying trees? I have a tree in front of my house that's 30 years old. I took it, a little sapling, out of my mother's yard. I call it my mother's tree. Why can't we go into the woods? There's woods all around this place and save ourselves five grand. I'll go dig one of the trees up for you. This just seems to me like a waste of money. Where are we going to put these trees?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I take Mr. Canaccioli up, and I'd like to see him dig a tree out.
To answer Mr. Canaccioli's question, Director Buckley, when this was being presented, notified the town is applying to receive designation as a Tree Town, which allows us to get more grant funding. Part of that grant, part of that designation requirement needs, is that we need to spend X amount per capita on tree-related expenses. Director Buckley is just looking to replace the trees that we had to cut down from the ice storm, or trees that we've cut down that we haven't had to replace. As to where they're being planted, I'm sure Director Buckley would have some information for you there. But it's part of a grant that we're applying for, that if we show that we have the match, we can get another five grand for trees to plant around the town.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Are you speaking as a selectman?
Yes, sir. Can we hear from the DPW Director on the purpose of the proposed tree farm?
Jeffrey, I couldn't hear you because your mouth was moving past the mic too much.
Request that we hear from the DPW Director on the purpose of the tree farm.
We asked for the funds to get trees, basically, so that we could spend money to get more money, to enter into the whole grant process. 5,000 actually isn't a lot of trees. The trees will be stored at Rufus Putnam Park. The plan is to start to restore trees on Maple Ave. Most of the maple tree stock is gone from Maple Ave, some on Sentinel Tree, and we wanted to reserve 20% for petitions. If someone were to petition for a tree, and that, you know, a shade tree to go into their street, we'd put one in. 20% of the trees we purchased will go to petition purposes.
Jennifer Plank, Jonathan Circle. So, if we spend $5,000 for trees and the upkeep, or, I'm sorry, just the planting, what are we looking at grant-wise in the future to come our way? $5,000 or?
An additional $5,000, and then it also opens up new DCR grants for us to help maintain our tree stock that we have in town.
So, we're spending 5,000 to get 5,000 with the hopes that then we can?
In the future, yes.
Get more grants later on?
Yep.
So, it's kind of just a wash right now? If we spend this, it will get us to the Tree City status or Tree Town status?
Yeah.
I mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it's basically just kind of a wash, this 5,000? Like, if we spend it, we're getting it?
We're going to get another 5,000 that we have to use to purchase more trees. So, it's doubling the amount of trees we would get.
So, now we have $10,000 worth of trees to use? Okay.
Or, Mr. Moderator, if I can add to that, not just trees, but their care, so also going in and trimming the trees that we already have, fixing branches that are overhanging roads and stuff like that. So, it's tree-related fixtures. Joe?
Why don't you stand up? You want to stand up and say that? It may be her question, so you may want to do it first, Joe.
Sir? It's not uncommon, and I'm actually relatively new to the grant process with the state grants, to, you have to check so many boxes to get access to more money and get access to more funds. So, it's not unusual to get the Tree City designation to have access to other grant funds. That's what motivated us to do this in the first place.
Rachel Dolan, Ware Road. I understand the concept of spend money to get free money. But when's the last time we've gotten a new employee in our DPW department? We have been so drastically behind on replacing employees we lost probably a decade ago. They are working with a skeleton crew. I would rather see our money go into an employee that can actually help our town. There's plenty of trees on Pleasantale Road that, let me tell you, 13 days in the ice storm without power, I'd like to see those trees come down. There is a lifespan on trees. They don't live forever. They just don't. So, I'm sorry, I'd rather see an employee added to our DPW department than trees.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Buckley, some of this money could go to an employee to help prune trees that we already have. Is that what was said earlier? Disregard my comments.
Matt Lavori, 28 Grizzly. So, I have a couple of questions. Just to clarify, we're spending five to potentially get a grant to spend five grand more, so we're actually getting a potential 50% discount, spending five grand to get $10,000 worth of trees, assuming we get this grant. So, I have two questions. Who is issuing the money for the grant? And what is our success rate in terms of just overall applying for grants?
Mr. Moderator, the grant is through the Department of Recreation, Conservation and Recreation, DCR, through their Forestry Division. The town's never applied for this grant before. I have applied for it three years prior. We got it two of the three years that I applied for it, in other places that I've worked. But we'll see what happens with the town.
What is our success rate on applying for grants?
For any grants in general? We've got a very good success rate, particularly with our fire and police. We just got one for our planning department, actually, three for our planning department to implement online permitting softwares and other different programs there. We have a very good success rate with grants overall as a town. This is just one we haven't applied for yet.
Just a follow-up question to Mr. Buckley's point that there are other grants once we get this Tree Town status? Do we, have we quantified what other grants are available once we have this status?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just last month, yes, the Commonwealth released a new grant database in which all federal and state grants that we are eligible to apply for are now listed on the same page, on the same website, with their deadlines and so on from there. So, we are looking forward to that because they are broken down by category, too. I can't give you an exact number off the bat, right off the top of my head, but that is something we are looking at, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And when will the petitions be available for trees?
Is there any other comments? Is there any other comments? Are there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. I would say we probably should count. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All right, certainly. This side over here, please raise your cards to be counted again. All those opposed, please raise your cards to be counted for noes. This motion is defeated by 42 noes to 36 yeses. Motion is defeated. Moving on to Article 23. To see if the town will vote to appropriate available funds, including free cash, to sum of $5,750 to purchase a stump grinder, or take any action in relation thereto? Order in the house, but it was entertaining. Can I have, can I have a motion, please, maybe?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5,750 from free cash to purchase and equip a stump grinder, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? I would assume you're speaking as an individual going out there.
Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. We just voted down the tree farm, which, we voted it down. If we vote this one down, think of the stumps that your kids trip over on their way to school. Think of the things on the edge of the road where we drive over. A stump grinder is a minor little thing that's going to help our town tremendously.
Hi, Metro City, 4 Brintle Drive. So, I think, to kind of clarify a little bit on this issue, stumps, believe it or not, are a pretty big environmental concern with the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I think, tree farm aside, that this actually serves a different purpose, in that it allows us to more readily dispose of stumps, which, believe it or not, there are very strict regulations as to how you can do that, where they can be placed, and things like that. So, it is somewhat of a useful item, I believe, and that's, I think, why we requested it.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 23. To see if the town will vote to appropriate available funds, including free cash, to sum of... Well, we're going to skip that one, because I just read it. We're going to go on to Article 24. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of $2,500 to cover the cost of repairs that need to be made to the pool, pump, house, roof, including all incidental or related expenses, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,500 from free cash for repairs to the pool, pump, house roof, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 25. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of $7,897 to purchase a plotter printer, oh, excuse me, 70 cents as well on there, to purchase a plotter, printer, slash scanner for the Department of Public Works, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $7,897.70 from free cash to purchase the plotter printer with built-in scanner for the Department of Public Works, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 26. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of $7,897.70 to purchase a plotter printer scanner for the Community Hall Annex, and including all incidentals or related expense, or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $7,897.70 from free cash to purchase a new plotter printer with built-in scanner for the Community Hall Annex building, including all incidental and related expenses.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote in favor of this, on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, do you have discussion? Please yell before I get to the third one next time, please. No, no.
Jennifer Plank, Jonathan Circle. Maybe I'm not aware of where departments are. Whereas the Department of Public Works versus the Community Hall Annex, are we not able to share an almost $8,000 piece of equipment that I can almost guarantee wouldn't be used daily? Right?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The Department of Public Works is located across the street from KP's next to Marshfield. The annex is next to the Community Hall Building, in between the Community Hall and the fire station. They are not networked to each other. The main purpose down at the DPW building is, with all of the water sewer work coming up, this allows us to print big maps. The Department of Inspection Services, so building, electrical, yeah, is in the annex as well as the planning office. The main purpose in the plan, in the Annex Building is for the scanning portion of it, as we have plans and maps going back to the beginning of the last century, that we cannot dispose of unless we have an electronic copy of them, taking up most of the third floor of the Community Hall Building, and a good amount of space in the Annex Building as well. That also allows us to then, with our new electronic permitting system, since plans are submitted to the town online, now that if an inspector needs to have it printed when they go to visit the site, it allows us to print those in-house, rather than having to farm and pay for those outside.
And the new computer system won't integrate this all with the $25,000 that was spent in another article to integrate this all into one unified system?
Yeah, the new computer system article was, in speaking to our contractor, who does our IT work, we found that we have 23 computers that are running on an operating system that will have end-of-life next year and will no longer have security upgrades. And the devices that those operating systems are running on are old enough that it won't support a new upgrade. So, those are actual machines themselves, rather than a new system.
Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane. Just wanted to emphasize that the significance of the two different plotter scanners are that it gives us an opportunity to begin to get into the digital world, to start digitizing the volumes of maps. the volumes of maps, and charts, and graphs, and everything that takes up the Town Planner's Office, and the Annex, and the second floor of Community Hall. We have records that go back to the seventeen hundreds in there, and this is an opportunity to begin to preserve some of these charts, these big records, to be able to actually scan it, and save it, and preserve it. And we did discuss the reason why we wouldn't just want to push for one scanner and have them share it, but that's not realistic. These are two different corporations, if you will, within our town structure. The DPW has their own mission, as does the Town Hall and the Annex in there, so, my two cents. Thank you.
Hi, Matt Lavoy, 28 Grisley Drive. So, I understand the desire to digitize. I also heard we're not networked, so where are these files, once they're scanned, going to be stored, and how are departments going to access them if we're not networked?
Mr. Moderator? Thank you. We have a network where we store our files. What we can't do is, we have fiber optic cable connecting the Community Hall, the Annex, and the Public Safety Building, but that cable does not run from those three buildings to the Department of Public Works, so that's where we can't network print. We can store them on the town's network that's stored on a virtual server. So, once they're digitized, we will be able to have them on the cloud-based server.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 27, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight cents, available funds, including free cash, to purchase tables and chairs for the community center, including all incidental and related costs, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight cents from free cash to purchase tables and chairs for the community center, including all incidental and related expenses.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 28, to see if the town will vote to appropriate available funds, including free cash, to sum of thirty-five thousand to fund a feasibility and design study for the construction of a new senior center, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars and zero cents from free cash to fund a feasibility study, a feasibility design study for a new senior center, as well as any architectural costs associated with said design.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance votes favorable on this.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Carolyn Seaman, 23 Billy Lane. I can't see that the town financially can support some... Something of this nature. What I'm saying is, I don't think the town financially can support, going forward, a building of this nature. What I would like to see is the thirty-five thousand dollars taken to upgrade the current record... Senior Center. For instance, for the accessibility of people who come in who have mobility issues, the door is not easily used by someone that's in a wheelchair or having a cane. There should be a button outside the door, so they can hit that button and open... Get in without struggling. I think the thirty-five thousand dollars should be used to look into things to improve the center that we have, instead of looking down the road and perhaps wasting this money.
Melissa Schannard, Jackson Avenue. My question about the senior center is, is that the community center? I think sometimes, like, I personally don't know if it's a community center, or is this an additional building for a senior center? A new building? Okay. So, the existing building would remain as what functionality?
That would probably be part of the feasibility study, to see, you know, some possible reuses after the fact.
Okay. And then, is there any information about the population that would use the senior center? Or how many people in town?
Nancy Nichols, 5 Lizzie Lane, and the Director of the Senior Center currently. We have over seventeen hundred seniors in town. As far as the... Who uses it now? It depends. I mean, we service... Some of them are duplicated numbers, meaning they come for more than one event.
Speak closer to the mic, people are going to have...
Sorry. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we service, I mean, hundreds a month, and again, those are duplicated numbers. Somebody may come for different services. But with the population, the aging population growing, and more need for resources, for, you know, they become... Senior centers are becoming a resource center to send out and give information, as well as have activities, exercise, et cetera. And it statistically shows in all our surrounding towns, when a new building goes up, more people come. The town of Sterling had two hundred people walk through the door that had never gone through, when their senior center, and they're already too small, and they built bigger than they were. So...
Well, yeah, kind of thing. So, this building necessarily wouldn't be dual-function. This would simply be a senior center, correct? Because I thought, like, there's a sign out in front of the building that actually says "Senior Center Now"?
Well, it's a community center that houses the senior center and...
Okay.
You gotta speak into the mic, so everybody can hear you, please.
Right now, the current building is a community center. It houses the senior center. It houses recreational activities, as well as other community functions. You know, we might have meetings there, et cetera. So, I think the study would cover, you know, what do you do? Do you renovate what you have? Do you build a new building? Do you need some more space for recreation, for other... It would kind of encompass all of that.
So, it would tell us... It would tell us if we maintain a community center versus a separate building for... We don't know. Okay.
Technically, you could call a senior center a community center today. You know what I mean? It's of use for the community, but a study, yes, would show, with what we have, does it make sense to keep what we have, to renovate it, to keep the current uses, to separate the uses, you know, to build a building with two entrances?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Elaine Munzner, 1 Prospect Street. I have several questions on this. First of all...
Speak closer to the mic, they can't hear you, please.
I will, thank you. Take that thirty-five thousand?
Closer to the mic.
Yeah. Take the thirty-five thousand, go into the building that we have now, look through it, see what has to be fixed, fix it, and use it. Or tell me where you plan on putting this new senior center. And if you do that, make sure it's accessible to everybody, good lighting, good footing, and wheelchair accessible, bathroom accessible, whatever. And question number two, who decides to get... Who uses that building? Can we use it at night? Do we have to go through somebody? Do we have to pay for it? I just wonder, because being the taxpayer and a senior, I don't get much out of this town, because I have a well and a septic system. You plow, fire, and police department. That's it. I enjoy going to the senior center at night, and, you know, I'm not that old that I can't see my way around, but the lighting at this building is terrible. So, before you go looking for a new one, fix this one. Thank you.
Randy? Can I... Sheila?
Thank you. There's been a lot of questions. I'll try to cover very high-level, several of them, because they're coming from different angles. The first is relative to our debt levels, which I think was one of the first questions that came up. We have been operating with a significant percentage of debt for quite some time, to the point where the majority of any capital projects that we knew we would have coming down the road really have not been a point of discussion for a long time, probably a decade or so. We built a lot very quickly, about twenty years ago. We've been catching up with that. We still have three very large projects for which the payments are still a long way off from being finished. CIPC is well aware of this, and in fact, Rebecca Tuttle, our treasurer-collector, could speak best to the debt that we are carrying. That said, we are finally starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to some of our debt. We are finally at the point where we can start taking a better look at our infrastructure, knowing... And that takes me to the next point. Knowing that the community center, senior center project, is a manageable project size-wise, we have multiple communities, neighboring communities in the area, who have recently built new senior centers, who have been very cooperative in offering to share the information that they have found. We have a growing senior population here in town. This project, relative to some of the other projects that we also know we need, is a project that is manageable for the town at this point. The other thing that comes into play, and I think the reason why you're hearing that the Finance Committee supported it as well, CIPC, is that the building, and I think we heard a couple times, you know, why not spend the money? Thirty-five thousand dollars on that building is not going to get us anywhere, and I think you referenced some of the issues that we have with it. The doors and the lack of handicapped access, the bathrooms are an abomination, the kitchen is insufficient. As far as the design of the building, very high-level things that have come up, certainly have been community meeting space, and that's a much later discussion as far as who uses it, where those sign-ups are, is it available to people, once the senior activities are maybe finished for the day. It's farther along in the process, but certainly it was part of the discussion. I think the other thing that just came up was where it would be, location-wise. We don't have a lot of options, but that will come out in the feasibility design portion, which is the first piece we absolutely need to do in order to see this through. Now, this only gets us, again, that first piece getting done. After that, the body will have to come back to the town and ask for the next piece, to say, well, here's what was found from feasibility design. Clearly, as part of that, they're going to want to do information sessions and information gathering from the residents to see what their wants and needs are, but I will stand by this article every day. That building is... It's insufficient. It's an embarrassment. It's going to be way more than three hundred fifty thousand... Thirty-five thousand dollars to fix it, and I think I just, you know, probably said what it actually would take, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I think our seniors deserve better, and we are finally in a position to start talking about it.
Cutting the building. Do not put carpeting in a new building on concrete floors, because they get wet, they develop a mold, and it's a waste of money, because carpeting only lasts so many years, and if you don't shampoo them and have professionals come in every... Twice a year, you're going to be spending more money on carpeting. So, tile the floors to begin with. Thank you.
So, do we decide... Can I speak up here as a private citizen, or do I have to walk around to the... Got to go around?
I'll let her go while you're walking, is that okay? I don't have to let you talk either, then.
Lauren Waymoth, 7 Briarwood Road. I think that we do need a new senior center, community center, whatever, and I'm fine with the thirty-five thousand dollar feasibility and design study. I'm confused as to why in Article 13, we voted for eighteen thousand dollars to replace the front walkway before we do a feasibility and design study, where we might decide that the walkway shouldn't be where it is, and we've just replaced it.
Mr. Moderator? Thank you. The answer to the question is, the walkway that's currently there is out of compliance with ADA standards, and even if we do move the senior center, we'll still own the building, and still own any liability that comes from that walkway. The eighteen thousand and change that was proposed in Artic... A previous article, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, is to put a new flat walkway with railings on both sides, lighting fixtures, and other things to bring it up to full ADA compliance. That way, since the town is still going to own the building, in the end, we lose that liability that we have should someone have an accident on that. A couple weeks ago, up until when the DPW did a brief temporary repair on the walkway, the concrete slabs that made the walkway were uneven with each other, to the point that they had to be coned off. The issue is, is that the side that was coned off also was the side that had the railing into the building. We had a temporary fix, so that we were allowing people to use the railing now, but it's still not up to standard per federal ADA compliance, where if there's an injury there, the town is liable for that. So, again, it's just fixing it, since the town's still going to own it in the end, anyway.
Metro City, 4 Brintle Drive. When this item came up, I think we had a discussion, and just quick clarification, too, CIPC did not vet the study. But I think the conversation revolved around really what our needs were in town, and I think that I'm a proponent of this article, simply because if you look at kind of the population trends, and the challenges health-wise that these communities in North Central Mass face, particularly rural communities, you have a large problem with folks aging in place. And what we've heard is that our current building we're using for the senior center is wholly inadequate. It's not ADA compliant. You have two of our most vulnerable populations in town using that facility, with youth and the elderly. I think that when you look at the services that are being provided at the senior center, so food security through the food pantry, transportation, we really need to start looking at something that will better serve the community long-term for that population, particularly as this has been identified as a leading regional health issue by the state, and we're just going to continue to see this problem resurface unless we start really taking it head-on now and addressing it. So, thank you.
Jean Grant, Sycamore Drive. I think my only concern, I'm all for a new senior center, is the sticker shock, the price for the study, and I was just wondering where the thirty-five thousand dollar quote comes from, because that's really high, I feel like, to run a study, and that's my question.
Mr. Moderator? Thank you. To answer your question, ma'am, we called around to different architectural firms. The average price was actually closer to fifty, sixty-five thousand dollars, but because we have so many new senior centers in the area, we were able to kind of say, can we use what they already have to work towards we have here? So, that's where we ended up with the thirty-five thousand dollars. We actually brought it down significantly, because we were able to say we have new senior centers in Holden, in Sterling, and other locations near us. Is it possible to pull from that, too? So, that's where that came from. Thank you.
Jennifer Plank, again. Jonathan Circle. So, is this for a senior center or a community center? Because I feel like we're using those terms synonymously. Article 27, we just bought tables and chairs for a community center. Is that not going to be a community center? Is it not, because the sign out front does say "Senior Center Now"? So, I'm confused as to what this is going to be if this continues.
The article stated, as I read, a study to...
It says here, yeah.
A new senior center.
But are we... But they have also said "community center" in the responses to people.
Yeah. I understand your question. I think, relative to now, I think two people have asked this question about Glenwood Road specifically. I think you're seeing at Glenwood Road exactly the reason why we are bringing this up tonight. The building is insufficient in many ways, one of which is space for all of those activities to happen at once. And while we have seen communities within the state build multi-generational centers, the belief at this point, again, based in some part on what we are seeing in our neighboring communities and the successes that they are having, is that this community would be best suited to a devoted senior center. That said, there's no question that... And again, we're very early in the process, and this would come out as part of feasibility design, that we do want to ensure that a taxpayer-funded building is utilized to its maximum, and what that would mean is to ensure that there are community-sized spaces available for events typical, like you would see in Holden, for example, where they'll host big regional meetings. Once in a while, they'll allow a nonprofit to come in. That's something that we would want to work out as part of the process, but you're right, and the language in the article is correct, and you're taking from it what it needs to be, which is this is for a senior center.
Okay. If I may add on to just what Sheila said, may I to address that question? I think also, this study design would then mean that the building on Glenwood Road...
this study design would then mean that the building on Glenwood Road is open, and that would look at what the use is for that space then.
Establish that that is not a good space for anybody, correct? I mean,
That has not
The flooring, the walkway, the ADA, I mean, we're going up and listing all those things that it's not good for anybody for?
We haven't established that at all, and this study would kind of look at what, if it is feasible spot for the senior center to stay there. That has not been established. Some of the repairs for the walkway and everything are repairs that need to happen to maintain that space as it is, regardless of what the use is.
Just the continued, the restrooms are horrible, and the, you know, so the list has gone on through the conversation as to what is, how ill-reparated.
I can't speak to what Sheila said for Sheila. My, I think that she was speaking in the context of a space for seniors, that it's, I mean, it's not in the best of condition period, but it's not positive, it's not feasible long-term for seniors. So, it's, if that makes sense.
On topic, please.
Mr. Moderator, Harry Sekman, thirteen Beechwood Drive, Chairman of the CIPC. I would like everybody to know that this issue of a senior center has been coming before us for many, many, many years now. We have put it on the back burner because it was not the right time. We knew there had to be a feasibility study done. We were not experts in this, so we couldn't make recommendations. We actually feel this is part of a long-term project of looking at all the buildings in Rutland and seeing how many of them, or some of them, can be combined for the effectiveness, for efficiency, and for the well-being of the town through a bigger group than the CIPC. But this year, looking forward, and we, I personally have had, people call me and ask me when this thing is going to go through. When are we finally going to get this in a warrant? And these are seniors. So this isn't just something coming from the CIPC. But we do support this, and we think this is the time at least to do a study, because nothing's going to get done. You can keep throwing money at this building, but it's not going to solve the long-term problem for which Rutland needs to address. Thank you.
Nancy Nichols, five Lizzie Lane. I just want to clarify a couple of things. Several people have mentioned the sign. The sign does say senior center, and it says Rutland Council on Aging, actually, and community center. That sign, and Mr. Canaccioli can attest to this, there was a sign that said community center for many, many years. It was stolen about three years ago. So, actually, funds from specific to Council on Aging, the Formula Grant that we receive every year, purchased that new sign, and we made sure that it said both, because not everybody knew that the senior center was in there, but we made sure that it also maintained the community center. And that was paid, again, solely with funds from the Council on Aging. So that's the first thing I want to clarify. Second thing, a couple of years ago, we did have an architect come in just to see what would it cost to remodel the building. You know, if we renovate this, does it make sense? Does it, should it be a tear-down? They wanted almost twenty-five thousand dollars just to give us a couple of answers. So unfortunately, the studies are expensive, but they're necessary. So even though the number sounds big, it's not that scary. That number also, along with what Mike did say, came from Executive Office of Elder Affairs. That was a guideline, too, between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand. So, that being said as well, we use the higher numbers. We wouldn't have to come back for more. But certainly, I think everyone is concerned, no matter who uses any building in the town, it has to be safe for everybody. So, long-term usage, no matter, you know, buildings are good for so many, you always have to upkeep them. They're never going to be good forever. So, thank you.
Matt Lavoy, twenty-eight Grizzly. I have a couple of questions. So, what I'm hearing is that we have senior center on this article, and what I'd ask is perhaps looking at revising that to say community center. And the reasons I think people have made are, there are ADA compliant issues with the current building. ADA does not just hit seniors. There are youth, there are everyday citizens that would benefit from a community center. The other piece that I understand is our community center today is not really largely used by the community. For instance, our youth baseball league will rent out the CRA Center in Holden to conduct their winter sessions, weekly. It could be an opportunity, if you're looking at a whole community center, to look at opportunities to get revenue back on that center and provide options for the entire community to leverage. So I just put it out there that I think it's the wording of the article rather than the purpose of it.
Elaine Munzner, one Prospect Street. The community center needs to be fixed, okay? So you're going to do a feasibility study. Why not just tear down that building and build a new building on that property? How much, what did that architect tell you would be to fix the community center as it is? Because I know what St. Patrick's paid for their building for CCD, and it was under three hundred grand. So, and we did it in three years. So I know a big building can be built for under three hundred grand. If you've got the property, and you have the property, develop it.
Mr. Moderator, if I may answer that?
All right, certainly, Mike.
Oh, thank you. The reason for the study is Master of Law, Chapter 30, 39m, requires before we do any public building construction, we have to undertake a feasibility and design study to see if we are spending the taxpayer money on new construction in a appropriate and cost-effective manner.
Kathy Cochran, Palmagussett Road. And I want to address the sports being used in the community center. We have holes in the walls that have never gotten fixed from baseballs. You can come up and look at them. They're in the doors. When they put in the new ductwork for the air conditioning system, it wasn't even finished yet, and it was damaged by baseballs. So we had to stop it.
Is there any other discussion on the article? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the article, of the motion, please signify by raising your cards. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 29, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of hiring a consultant to assist the town in the process of drafting a town charter and establishing a town charter commission or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to fund the hiring of a consultant to assist the town through the process of drafting a town charter, including all incidental and related expenses.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on the article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Two times early, eighteen Blue River Lane, I don't need a mic. Can you explain what this is going to do, what the commission is, what are we going to write up? We don't have a charter now. We're going to revamp the charter before we spend twenty grand.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. To answer Mr. Canaccioli's question, it is correct, the town currently does not have a town charter. The state recommends, or for those that don't know what a town charter is, if you think of the national level and the federal government, a charter is the equivalent to a constitution for the town that specifically states this is how the town is set up, and this is how those agencies and branches of the government are to function. State recommendations say that this is something that towns should start looking at doing when the town population is at six thousand to begin that process. The records in the town clerk's office as of, as recent as last week indicate that the town's population just broke nine thousand two hundred residents. The, what this process would be is to hire a consultant who's helped draft these charters for different municipalities across the commonwealths, who knows the process, to help us avoid mistakes in how we formulate the committee, how it's made, what we should do, what goes into the charter, how does it need to be drafted, what regulations need to be met, and how does it need to be approved. Now, the state does have three separate processes for how a town charter commission is set up. There's an elected, there's an appointed, there's timelines for some, there's no timelines for others. There's, the town has to vote after X number of years. The town doesn't have to vote. It can vote when the town feels it's ready. So this is to hire an expert to make sure we get it done, and we get it done right when we do it, so we don't have to go back and fix it later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All who's in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 30, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand from available funds, including free cash, to provide additional fund for continuing legal and land court to assist in the foreclosing parcels currently in tax title or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to provide additional funds for continuing legal and land court fees to assist in foreclosing parcels currently in tax title.
Is this, motion made in second. Is there any recommendation of the Finance, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 31, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, including free cash, to sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of selective demolition and cleanup of properties that town has taken through tax title, including all incidental or related expenses, or take any other actions relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars from free cash to fund selective demolition and site clearing of parcels currently owned by the town through tax title.
Motion made in second. Is there a recommendation of the Finance, please?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 32, to see if the town will vote to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from the Sunny Hill Estates or their then-current owners pursuant of GL Section 60, Section 77(c) on the following parcels of land. I will not read all those. You have them in front of you. Which the parcels are subject to tax-taking held by treasurer, said parcels to be under the care of custody and control and management of the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes and the authorize of the Board of Selectmen. To the record, the deed provides, the Board of Selectmen determines that the deed and the acceptance shall comply with the provisions of GL Section 60, Section 77(c) or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 32 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town vote in favor of this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there?
I just have a quick question. What does that equate to in dollars, the past due taxes? Just roughly. Sorry, Becky.
Mr. Moderator, Town Treasurer Collector, who is not a town resident, if that's okay.
If there's no objection, the Town Treasurer will speak.
Well, while she comes, can I just follow up to that? So that's question number one. Question number two is, how do we determine when we do what we're doing here? Why are we doing this on this particular parcel while, when there are other parcels that we're not doing it with?
Mr. Moderator, can I answer that, if that's okay?
Well, which one do you want to answer first? She's here.
Have Becky answer the first one. I'll answer this.
So the Rebecca Tuttle, Treasurer, Collector, Tax Collector, the parcels that we're voting on for the, for actually Articles 32, 33, and 34, the tax amounts that are outstanding are about fifty-five thousand dollars right now. That's with property, that's with interest and penalties.
And, Mr. Moderator, to answer his second question, thank you. There, when we have properties that are delinquent in tax payments and in tax title, there are two ways to take, to take ownership of them instead of payment. Either go through land court, or to take them in deed of lieu, deed in lieu of foreclosure, which this process is here. The developer who owns these lands, this is a former subdivision, these are parcels that were not built out, the, has since deceased, and his attorney is the executor of the estate, who has not been able to find heirs to the property. So the attorney, who is the executor of the estate, approached the town and said, rather than going through land court to pay the legal fees, could we do a deed in lieu of foreclosure? The difference is, it costs about a thousand dollars per parcel to put a parcel through land court to obtain ownership from it, for it that way. And it takes about two to two and a half years for that process to occur. If we do it through a deed in lieu of foreclosure, the only fee that the town has is the recording fee for the deed, and it is a, however long it takes for us to record that deed. For Articles 32, 33, and 34, this actually saves the town about twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the overall process to take ownership of these parcels that we are going to own anyway in two years. It's just, do we spend the money and wait the time, or do we take it now for cheaper?
If the moderator would allow me just a little bit of latitude. So, I believe we have parcels in our town center that the tax debt is, you know the parcel I'm talking about. How many dollars, just roughly? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, why is it that we're not acting upon that, and maybe we are, but rather than this, or with this? Yeah, sure.
These, the, the property owners of these parcels, all twenty-eight of them, is, is, has offered to give them to the town in deed of lieu, in deed in lieu of foreclosure. But the parcel that we're talking about in the center of town, that they, we're still going through land court and bankruptcy and going through the expensive process to try and take that parcel. They're not willing to give it to us.
Okay. Last, and I'll say it. I understand those, those parcels are now empty. Is now not the time, or at least the last I knew they were, is now not the time to shut off the water, shut off the electricity, and say, okay, let's, let's get this thing straightened out?
Christine Bjorklund, Sherrillan Drive.
Speak closer.
Christine Bjorklund, Sherrillan Drive. I have two questions about the lots. One is, are any of them buildable? Number one, and number two, if you go to, if you do, if this passes and the town gets them in deed in lieu of foreclosure, and you go to auction them off, and you have no buyers, then what's the town do with the property?
Mr. Moderator, to answer the second question, what happens when we take ownership of it? The short answer, and I'll explain more after it, is it's the same as if we were to get it from land court. We, it's a, they're delinquent on the taxes, so the town takes ownership of the land. Now, it is something that we could go and try for auction, just like we do with any other parcels that we get through our tax title process. Chairman Crane from the Conservation Commission is here as well, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe of the twenty-eight, the Conservation has ruled that five are buildable lots. But we do put open the, nine, thank you, nine are buildable lots. Thank you, Peter. But again, it is something that if we take ownership, we could go out to auction for and see what happens. We have other parcels that we've taken through tax title, through land court, that we've tried to go out for auction, we haven't gotten any bites for. And then we try to go from there and see what the next step is. So it's just part of the general tax title process from there.
Yeah. So, it's a great area that I think could be for conservation land and trails. Is that something that's considered? It's wet. It's very wet. It's my backyard.
Yeah, the, those are conversations that once we take ownership, we'll, we'll have those conversations then.
Okay.
This is just mainly on the warrant so that we can save the twelve and a half thousand to, to get the inevitable result that we'll have in the end, anyway.
Right, yeah. That makes fiscal sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck Patterson, fifty-one Campbell Street. Many of you know I'm the past Many of you know I'm the past Treasurer Collector for the town of Shrewsbury, and past President of Massachusetts Collective Treasurer Association. To have Becky have a list like this, that you're getting this property for virtually nothing, versus spending $1,000 of property and taking two years, once they record these deeds, that's yours. So then, at that point in time, the town, the Board of Selectmen, ultimately may, depending on the property, this board will then decide what you want to do with it. I highly recommend, I wish I could have gotten these properties like that in Shrewsbury. You're crazy not to vote in favor of this.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Articles 33, to see if the town will vote to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure from Mark A. Israel and J. Z. A. Frame in their capacity as trustees of the Leonard Israel Revocable Trust, or then-the-current owners pursuant of GL Section 60, Section 77(c) on the following parcels of land that you have in front of you, which the parcels are in subject of tax-taking held by the treasurer said the parcels to be under the care and custody and control management of Board of Selectmen for the general municipal purposes and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to record the deed provided by the Board of Selectmen determine that the deed and the acceptance shall comply with the provisions of GL Section 60, Section 77(c) or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 33 as written in the warrant.
Motion is made and seconded, recommendation of the finance, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 34, to see if the town will vote to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure on Cheryl and Israel, Karen B. Israel, and then owners, or then owners pursuant of the GL Section 60, Section 77(c) of the following parcels, they are listed in front of you, which the parcels are subject to the tax-taking held by treasurer said parcel to be under the care and custody and control of the Board of Selectmen for the general municipal purposes and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to record the deed provided the Board of Selectmen determines that the deed and the acceptance shall comply with the provisions of GL Section 60, Section 77(c) or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 34 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, recommendation of the finance, please?
Finance recommends favorable on this action.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 35, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to be revised by the definition of the term frontage as set forth in the handout entitled, November 14th, 2019, Special Fall Town Meeting, proposed zoning bylaw change, Article 35, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Moderator, point of view, point of order, point of privilege, if I may address the mic. I looked in the book and that's an appropriate motion, thank you.
Please hold. Is that so?
These next three articles dealing with, Lou Carnacoli again, 18 Blueberry Lane, these articles dealing with zoning and bylaw changes, et cetera. I believe these should be at the annual town meeting where we have a bigger group of people to be able to listen to the argument and then make an appropriate judgment. The fact that there's roughly 60 of us here, 70 of us here, versus maybe a couple hundred that would be at an annual town meeting, I think it would be appropriate for us to table this until May and deal with it then. So I would like, I would like consideration on that. I think, I think we should wait. That's my opinion.
So just proceed. Please proceed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 35 as written in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made and seconded, recommendation of the finance, please?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, my name is Chuck Patterson, 51 Campbell Street. I do agree with Mr. Carnacoli before my prepared statement, that zoning should come to an annual meeting, not a special town meeting. In a partially filled gymnasium, and you're talking about zoning, and you have our state legislature that says that these should be two-thirds vote, 60 people here or 70 people making decisions on zoning is a problem. So, may I? I am here to ask you to vote no on this article. So often, we sit here and zoning, it's always, stop building, stop this, stop that, stop the builders. Well, this article here, there's people involved here, it's my family. Because what this article does is take away frontage, and the way they wrote it, and I say "they" in general terms, continuous frontage, the minimum required, this is what they have written in, "The minimum required lot frontage shall be provided along one street line and cannot be accumulated along two or more streets." Well, guess what? What happens when you have a corner? What happens when you have a corner? So that means you can only use one street? That's not right. And then, now you're going to affect my family, and who knows how many other families? Where you sit there and you take away my and my family's rights to develop their property. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can I make a motion to amend?
If an amendment is made from the floor, it needs to be in writing before the end of the meeting. So you're welcome to make an amendment, you just have to write it out so the town clerk has it. You can make the motion, just write it out, so when you're done, that's all. Till we get the verbiage correct, please.
So I'd like to make the motion to amend, to remove the first new sentence in which states such frontage shall provide practical vehicular access to the principal building on a lot for residents, delivery services, fire, police, and other emergency services. The definition of frontage and access is defined by mass general law, and to go beyond mass general law in an A&R process, which is approval not required, would be, wouldn't be wise for the town, it may just incur more legal fees if a plan were denied that wasn't in conformance with case law and mass general law based on that single sentence. And I'd also like to amend the second sentence, to say the minimum required lot frontage shall be provided along one street line and cannot be accumulated along two or more streets, except as in a corner lot.
So that, this is an amendment? I'm looking for a second on the amendment.
I will second that.
I'll just take him where he was at the mic, Mr. Patterson has seconded that motion. At this time, I'd like to have discussion on the amendment for Mr. Elbag. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Patterson?
On the amendment, certainly, thank you for your amendment, by placing that change to a corner lot. Thank you very much. I endorse his amendment.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, our town planner, David George, is here as well. He is not a town resident, if it'd be okay for him to...
Does he want to talk? Mr. Sackman?
Mr. Moderator, just so I understand, the article is going to stay the way it is, except we're going to add the feature that a cornered lot is exempted from this article? Except for, no. What's changing then?
It was also deleting the first sentence.
Okay.
The amendment was also to delete the first sentence of the change. So delete in its entirety the sentence that starts, "Such frontage shall be, shall provide", delete that sentence in its entirety. That sentence is already governed by mass general law through the A&R process and case law. So there's no reason to have it in the zoning. And if it is in the zoning, it may just give a future planning board a false sense of security and denying an A&R, only to incur the town with legal fees.
Do you understand what he's saying?
Not really, but I'd like an explanation from you in regards to that, if we can.
Does the town planner like to come up and speak on the amendment to, make it so Mr. Sackman can understand it easier than?
I mean, I'm not a builder, I just want to know what this thing really says.
There's no objection from the floor for having our town planner speak on behalf of the town?
Good evening, Dave Georgetown Planner. So...
We're only speaking about the amendment right now.
The amendment to remove the sentence relative to public safety vehicles accessing the lot.
Yes.
And to remove continuous, or modify continuous to include...
Word, corner.
...corner lots. I would say that adding the second sentence, or the sentence underlined, that's new for the first time, "Such frontage shall provide practical vehicular access to the building, principal building on a lot for residents, delivery services, fire, police, and other emergency services. The minimum required lot frontage shall be provided along one street lot line and cannot be accumulated along two street or more streets," is, it mirrors the definition of frontage in the state zoning statute, which is perfectly acceptable. It underlines and emphasizes what's currently required for our frontage, to make it plain what it's trying to do. Otherwise, if it's not there, you could have frontage over here, frontage over here, and access to the actual site, not over the frontage street, in some worst-case scenario. So I don't see an issue with that language. Continuous distance measured along this street lot line? What I'd be telling the group here is that this definition is fairly conservative. Existing definition is very permissive. The conservative definition is continuous along one street line. This is not a radical definition, in my opinion. The several definitions that were surveyed for this purpose to make this proposal, it's continuous along one street line, and several of the definitions include the public safety access. With respect to Mr. Patterson, Mr. Patterson has frozen zoning through an A&R to do a five-lot A&R, which would use the existing definition, which does not make any distinction as to where the frontage is, whether it's on one or two streets. So in terms of losing rights there, I'm not sure I would accept that presentation. That's what I'd be saying to these comments here, if there's anything else I can try to answer, I'd be glad to.
Is there any other comments on the amendment? Is there any other comments?
Point of order, could you please read the amendment again?
Do you want Anita to read it, or do you want Mr. Elbag to read it? They should be the same anyways.
The amendment as proposed is to delete the sentence, "Such frontage shall provide practical vehicular access to the principal building lot for residents, delivery services, fire, police, and other emergency service." The second part of that amendment is to add to the last sentence, "Except corner lots."
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? This is going to be two-thirds vote? I stand corrected, we do not need two-thirds on the amendment. We only need majority on the amendment, the two-thirds will come in place when we do the original article. So at this point, if there's no further discussion on the amendment, the amendment only is majority. All those in favor of the amendment that Mr. Elbag has stated, that will write before he leaves tonight, hopefully, all those in favor, please signify by the amendment by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we can have discussion on the amendment with the original motion. The original motion will be two-thirds, Mr. Carnacoli. Is there any discussion? Please proceed to the mic, she's going to be first, where she rose first.
Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. If somebody up there could explain this a little bit clearer, the way I've had it explained to me, that if I get this right, I could have a lot, or a buildable, or a community, and I could have little teeny bits of pieces that all added up to a lot. I'm saying this really badly, you know, guys know what I'm talking about. Could somebody explain it really fully as to how a developer can call that a lot, but there's actually an entry here, and an entry here, and a driveway there? I don't understand, does anybody, maybe?
Dave, can you explain that to us, please?
So, under the current definition, the current definition says, "Frontage as regarded in this zoning bylaw shall be determined as the distance measured along the street line." Because it doesn't say continuous, that means that if you have a lot that abuts a street up here and a street down here, you can sum up those to create the frontage, the required frontage for the lot. If you have three streets, you can do it, or four, or whatever. The continuous makes it plain that it's just one street segment, which would avoid aggregating lots, frontages from different parts of a lot that are adjacent to other streets. So yes, I think you do understand. It would allow for the aggregation of frontage from various streets. So if a lot does abut more than one street, then you could take what's here and add it to what's here, and try to get into compliance with the zoning. Does that answer your question? Well, if not, let me, please have...
Wayne Pichon, Paddock Road. I have a question, who the first gentleman is who proposed this, and how does that relate to the planning, whoever this person is? Sorry.
This gentleman here is the town planner. The first gentleman that made the motion is the Planning Board Chairman.
So then, I need to, I'd like to hear what the planning board has to say about this proposed amendment, and whether they agree with it or not. I guess I'm confused about why this was done outside of their meeting, and do they agree?
So you're asking for the planning board's thoughts on the amendment? Mr. Anderson?
The concept of frontage on particularly what are called A&R lots, these are non-subdivision lots, has been something of a problem for the planning board for quite some time, very, very particularly where the better part of the really, the best buildable land in the town is, it's already built on. And what happens with that is, for the land that is left, that may be less than the most desirable, surveyors, civil engineers, whoever, will, I guess, the best word I'll use is, they become very, very creative, okay, in designing a lot to be carved out of some larger parcel of land. In many, many cases, it also either creates or comes close to creating what is called and what has been defined by the courts as illusory frontage. Okay? Illusory frontage is basically, yes, here's a lot that has frontage, but you can't use it to get to the lot. Okay? The idea of requiring the continuous frontage is to help avoid creation of those kinds of lots. At the same time, maybe a little bit in answer to your question... At the same time, maybe a little bit in answer to your question, if I, if I could try to, let's say, paint a picture, let's say someone owned a parcel of property, they had 300 feet of frontage on a road. A son or daughter in that family decides they want to build a house on that property. So out of the middle of that 300 feet of frontage, they carve out 150 feet of frontage right, right in the middle of it, leaving 75 feet of frontage on one side, and 75 feet of frontage on the other side. What this change in the zoning bylaw would say is, no, you can't make that rest of that lot, a buildable lot, by taking 75 feet of frontage here, 75 feet of frontage here, to get to 150 feet. I don't know, does that maybe help you a little bit? Okay. That's about the best that I can explain.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I have a question for the town planner. So we heard from, I think, Mr. Patterson, is it? And the town planner indicated that this would impact, I think, a project or a property. How many existing parcels are there that this is going to impact, or is going to change the use in?
Well, based upon a recent build-out analysis, town-wide, there's approximately 6,886 acres that have not been built out or developed yet, which could result in 4,859 new dwelling units. So I believe that number assumed that it would be standard frontage, continuous along one street. If you consider that as ways to be creative to design lots, then any, a great number of those lots might be subject to this.
So could that have the potential of decreasing long-term revenue if those lots are now non-buildable?
I'm not sure I would go that far with it. If the assumption was that these lots can be created using standard frontage and standard minimum lot area, then the capability to build out to 4,859 does exist. I think you could get more than 4,859 if you could create lots that were using frontage under the current definition. However, having said that, if there's an issue with a lot, and the lot doesn't meet the existing frontage requirement, or the proposed frontage requirement if this is so passed, the applicants can go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and try to make a case that there's a hardship involved, and that they might be relieved granted. So that's what I would be telling you to that question.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Crane, Nate's Way. With the new, with the amendment that the body just passed, how much of the definition of frontage has been excluded from corner lots? Because, as I understand it, the words "accepting corner lots" was added to the end of the first sentence, which defines frontage. So is the entirety of frontage no longer defined for a corner lot?
Who would you like to answer this?
There's maybe a question for counsel.
Did you hear the question?
Is it to me?
Yeah.
It is.
I mean, unless Mr. Becker wants to answer.
Well, that's right. Good evening, everybody. My name is David Jenkins. I'm from KP Law. And we're supposed to say when we comment on any of this that we don't have any opinion as to whether or not the town should adopt this article, shouldn't adopt the article. We're here to try to ensure technical compliance. So your question, sir, is, I think, misassumes that the amendment "except corner lots" was added at the beginning of the language.
No, it was at the end of the sentence.
That's correct.
That was the motion.
That's correct. And what is the question now?
So how much of that sentence in advance does "accepting corner lots" apply to?
I would say that the sentence does not apply to corner lots.
At all.
At all, in its entirety.
And so is there a rational definition for frontage in the proposed bylaw that includes frontage for corner lots? Or has it completely invalidated?
Mr. Moderator. Just for clarification, the amendment "except for corner lots" was added to the second sentence, which says.
But the first sentence was deleted. That was the other half of the amendment.
Correct.
So the first sentence is gone.
Yes. But the sentence reads, "The minimum required lot frontage shall be provided along one street and cannot be accumulated along two or more streets except for corner lots." So that amendment for two, except, shall not be accumulated on two or more streets is "except corner lots," if that answers your question.
So, in other words, the sentence does not apply to corner lots?
Right.
Thank you.
Laurel Lynn Weymouth, 7 Briarwood Road. Just, I think, more on that question, but the fact that it has to be continuous would still apply to corner lots? It could just turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion with the amendment? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? This is a two-thirds vote, and I will have my counters count now, as I would like them to, please. All those in favor of the motion with the amendment, please raise your cards to be counted. This motion is defeated by lack of two-thirds. There was 39 yeses, 35 nos. This motion is defeated. Moving on to Article 36, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by inserting the word "definition" for the term of "lot regularity," as set forth in the handout entitled November 14, 2019, Special Fall Town Meeting, Proposed Zoning Bylaw Changes, Article 36, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 36 as written in the warrant.
Motion's made, looking for a second. Motion made in second. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing, this is a two-thirds vote as well. Unless it's unanimous, we will have to count. I will try for an unanimous vote on this one. All those in favor of Article 36, please raise your cards. All opposed, same sign. We will count. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same, raise your cards, please. This motion is defeated as well because there was 38 yeses, 32 nos. Does not have two-thirds to pass. Motion defeated. Moving on to Article 37, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by the revisions, the powers and duties of the zoning board of appeal as set forth in a handout entitled November 14, 2019, Special Fall Town Meeting, Proposed Zone Bylaws, Article 37, also on file with the town clerk, and further to authorize a town clerk to assign appropriate numbering in order that the bylaw, being compliant with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw, or take any action relation thereto. Talk closer to the mic, please.
I am, am. I move to approve Article 37 as written in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion?
All right, Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. Can I just have an explanation of what this is trying to do?
This amendment simply adds language to the zoning board of appeals bylaw that does not allow them to grant use variances. As you may know, when someone does have, let's say, not enough either frontage on a piece of property, not enough side or rear lot setback, that sort of thing, they can go to the zoning board of appeals and get a variance to then allow them maybe to, you know, build an additional deck closer to the property line that would normally be allowed, or whatever. That's basically, at least part of the function of the zoning board of appeals. A use variance, however, would be to allow some sort of, what do I want to call it? Activity that is basically prohibited by the town's zoning bylaw. I guess, you know, a good example would be, let's say, in, oh, let's say, the middle of Central Tree Estates, someone decides they want to start a steel fabrication business. Okay? Such a thing would require a use variance. And use variances particularly are, at least from my, I'll say, my point of view, are something that lead to what we call spot zoning, which is simply not a very desirable thing to have according to best town planning practices.
Mr. Moderator, if I could add to that as well, please. Thank you. I would also like to add to what Chairman Anderson said, that this clarifies what's in our existing zoning bylaw. State statute states, state statute says that if a town's zoning bylaw allows a zoning board of appeals to grant a use variance, it must specifically state in an enumerated line, the zoning board of appeals may grant use variances. Our current zoning bylaw does not have that, but it also does not explicitly state it cannot. Now, the intent when it was passed was that the zoning board of appeals would not be able to, so this is just allowing us to clarify that so it's easier for our residents to understand the bylaw. The bylaw is currently in compliance with state law. It's not insufficient. It's just making it easier for our residents to understand the existing bylaw.
Michael Votruba, 76 Campbell Street. I don't know if this is contradictory to what you just said, but I would prefer to see the power of use variances left with the zoning board. It doesn't mean that they would have to change zoning usage, but, and maybe it sounds like they cannot do it currently because of the way it's defined, but I would prefer to see it so that they could change zoning usage in a case where it would make sense. It doesn't mean that they have to, but if a business came in that would be good for town, I think it would be, I'd rather have the option to allow them, to allow that business in town on a different use piece than not have the option.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion?
Can I make a motion to amend?
If you write two, yes.
If I write two, I'd like to amend that the board, the board of appeals shall have the ability to grant use variances. I think most of the town is residential. It's very limited zoning. And in some applications with this very large parcels of land on the outskirts of town, there may be nothing wrong with an alternate use other than residential, especially where we could use something besides residential to expand our tax base.
Is there a second on this? You'll second that? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? In turn, we are going to vote on the amendment in its only majority, as it was earlier. The, the original motion will be two-thirds, so we're going to vote on Mr. Elbag's amendment. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed? It is too close to call. I would like to count this on, this is only a majority. So all those in favor of Mr. Elbag's amendment, please signify by raising the cards. All those opposed, same sign, please. The amendment is defeated. Thirty-three yeses, 34 nos. See, I told you we were close. I didn't realize we were quite that close. So is there any other discussion on the original motion? Is there any other discussion on the original motion? Is there any other discussion? Just so you understand, the amendment is not part of it because it was defeated. So we're going, voting on the original. This is two-thirds, so I will have my counters count the first time. All those in favor, as the motion read, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign, please. So the original motion is defeated. There was 28 yeses, 38 nos. Motion is defeated. Moving on to Article 38, to see if the town will vote to amend the town general bylaws as set forth in the handout entitled November 14, 2019, Special Town Meeting, Proposed Earthworks Board Bylaw Changes, authorize the earthworks board to. Yeah, that word there, thank you very much. Regulations subject to the approval of the select board in making additional clerical, ministerial, and editorial revisions to such bylaws, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Crane, Chair of the Earthworks Board, I move that the town vote to approve Article 38 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends the town vote to approve this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Back here, Lou Conackily, could you tell us what the earthworks are all about, and what this will do?
The earthworks board is a body created by bylaw, three years ago, I believe, at town meeting. It is responsible for the regulation and. It is responsible for the regulation and enforcement of the movement of earth within town. Today, the only bylaw that is, that falls under that is the earth removal bylaw. The earthworks board has been meeting to define other regulations and create soil management policy that would be town-wide. It has always been the vision of that board to be a regulating body, not just an enforcement body. What this, this amendment cleans up the language. I apologize. It was my first bylaw, and I made a lot of mistakes, so I did not make it sufficiently clear that the earthworks board could write regulations and get them passed at the town. So, the entirety of this bylaw, the important piece, is to clean up that language, to make it clear that the body, that the earthworks board can write regulations.
Give me an example of what regulations.
Suppose we want to begin regulating the import of earth so we understand where it's all coming from and what's in it, so we understand what's clean dirt and, for lack of a better phrase, what's dirty dirt, and how we want to manage polluted or mildly polluted dirt that comes into town. Today, we have no facility for regulating that.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
I'd just like to state that I'm in opposition. Dirt is currently regulated by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and Massachusetts General Law. For the town to take this on, it's just another, it's just another liability that we have to then enforce and spend money and staff hours trying to basically enforce and carry out this bylaw.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote, and this is a majority vote. Please, all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign. We will count, please. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed, same sign, please. Motion passes. Forty-three yeses, 32 noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 39. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 90, Section 17C, setting the reasonable and proper speed limit for all town-owned roads within thickly settled areas or businesses district at 25 miles per hour or take any action relation thereto.
Nick Monaco, police chief. Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will approve Article 39 as written in the warrant.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town vote favorable on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Ooh, wow. They want to go 30, I guess.
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to bring up the point that thickly settled is defined as structures within 200 feet for, I believe it's either a quarter mile or half mile. And as you know, our zoning is 200-foot frontage. This would render most of the streets in town as thickly settled and therefore would set the speed limit at 25 miles an hour almost everywhere in town.
To answer that question, this law does not apply to roads that are already regulated under special regulation. Most of the major roads in town are already regulated by Chapter 90, Section 18. So, that's your Pleasantale Roads, Maple Ave. That, none of that's going to change. The spirit of this is to apply to mostly developments, things that do not have a speed limit posted, things where the thickly settled area is a quarter mile, so...
Follow-up on that.
I agree with the chief, and the chief is correct, on the state highways in town. However, most of the town roads do not have legal speed limit postings and therefore would be subject to this. Pleasantale may have a couple of speed zones, but I don't believe Pleasantale has a speed zone for its entirety. Neither does Glenwood, neither does Wachusett Street, or many other, Palmagussit for that matter, Maple Ave. Those would all be impacted.
Like I just stated, Maple Ave, Palmagussit, Pleasantale, Glenwood, and all the state roads are already regulated by 9018 will not be affected by this statute. Furthermore, this statute gives the board of selectmen the authority to take these roads on a case-by-case basis. So, by passing this, by voting this law in, it's not going to automatically make all those thickly settled districts 25 miles per hour. He's suggesting that the approved speed zone is not for the entire of the street. Yes, it is. There's documents that from the very beginning of, like, we'll take Maple Ave for example, from the Paxton Line on Maple Ave to Main Street, every foot of that road is covered by a speed limit that is set by law. This will not change that. Glenwood is. The sign's missing, but the entirety of Glenwood, at least from Main Street to 68, is covered. That's why we'll take these on a case-by-case basis. This is not going to affect these roads like that, so...
Rachel Dolan, Ware Road. I'm assuming the intent of this bylaw is to slow traffic down in town, which I can fully understand. However, my concern is, you just clarified it won't be all thickly settled. So, in discussions I heard with the board of selectmen about this, if signage isn't going to be put on these roads, how do you expect people driving through this town to know what the speed limit is if the state statute for thickly settled is 30 miles an hour and there's no posted speed limit, which as I understand it, we can't afford the signs? I'm just baffled, you know? There's a lot of people who don't live in town that drive through this town. How are they going to know what the speed limit is if there's no posted speed limit sign? And our bylaw is different than the state statute. I don't think people are going to be going to the town website to look up the bylaw, you know, but you just said it's selected, so that just kind of, I'm a little confused how a reasonable person driving through this town is going to understand what the speed limit is if it's not posted.
So, another correction. It's not a bylaw. It's to vote to see if we will accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 9017C, which allows the board of selectmen to set the thickly settled speed limit to 25 miles per hour instead of what is already 30 miles per hour. It's a five-mile-per-hour difference. It's going to affect roads like Blueberry Lane, Central Tree Road, things like that. Oh, and with that law, it also gives us the opportunity to post a sign as you come into town, so you do not need to post every single one of those roads and every single development. You can post the law at the beginning of the, as you come into town, that says, "We've accepted this law, thickly settled speed limit is 20 miles, 25 miles per hour."
That would clarify what you just said. So, can I, can we get a promise from the select board here that you're going to give him the funding to make sure those signs are posted so the reasonable person driving is going to understand what the new speed limit is?
I don't mean to throw this back at you, Rachel. The funding, when we put it in, needs to be approved by this body at the next meeting. I think what this board will certainly, I will acknowledge that we will put it on the next agenda, is to ensure that it is an article to be discussed, to be put on for the town to give him the money. You're absolutely right.
So, you're asking this body to approve this, which by the way, I have no issue with, with the exception that the reasonable person isn't going to know what the new speed limit is. And I don't know how we expect our police officers to try and enforce a new speed limit, and I just see this being a very possible confrontational situation unless these signs are posted clearly for the public to know.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, just as a clarification on the language of the state statute, the new speed limit would not go into effect until voted upon by the select board, and that's what Chief Monaco was saying as the case-by-case basis. So, just to point that out there. Thank you.
Very valid point brought up by the former, the last speaker, Luke Conaccholi, 18 Blueberry Lane. And, believe me, for, I've been living there since '73. Since '73, I've been yelling at people speeding down Blueberry Lane, so I'm with anything that can slow them down. But I think it's foolish if there's not signage. And so, if we're not going to do the signers till the next meeting, unless there's a special meeting between now and May, we're going to have the law going to defect maybe Monday when you meet, and, but we're not going to have any signs up for seven months. It does, or six months. It doesn't make any sense to me. So, I think we should table this. I have no problem with the 25 mile an hour, but not impose it until you have the monies to put the sign up and then put the law up. But I think just a sign coming into Rutland on our major roads coming in is not going to be sufficient. I think there's got to be 25 mile an hour signs on Blueberry Lane. They should be on Wachusett Street. They should be on a lot of places. People, people may obey that, and they may obey that.
Any other discussion?
We can't buy the signs until we pass the provisions of the law. And like I said, each one of those streets that gets designated as a 25 mile per hour zone will be voted upon by the board of selectmen. So, we can apply signage as necessary. We're not going to go out and write tickets if there's no signs. I'm a reasonable guy.
Mr. Moderator, you know, I, whether it's 30 or 25, is, I'd like to see it 25, but I live on Beechwood Drive, and I can't tell you how many people, if the speed limit is 30, and it's been known for how many years, they don't know it's 30. 35, 40. I can't tell you like Luke Conaccholi, how many people I've yelled at. So, if they're not going to obey 30, what difference does it make if we move it to 25? Let's move it to 25. Give the select board the opportunity to do that if it's in conformity with state law. That's all we're asking for, to be conformity with state law. So, if it helps having one sign there that says thickly settled at 25, just one sign, and they know coming through my thickly settled street, that's worth it to me, particularly a lot of kids on my street. Thank you.
I know we've hit the three-hour mark, and we're all getting tired, and I, but I just needed to say, I was surprised at the reaction to this. Very often at our meetings lately in particular, we've had come in front of us requests for signs that we don't have probably enough budget for, and in many cases, it is because within a neighborhood, the residents of the neighborhood are speeding and other residents are complaining about it. This town has changed significantly. Our density has changed. We have far more people who are using alternate forms of transportation to get around or recreationally, walkers, runners, bikers, you name it. Allowing the chief to do this, and it's something that he requested, and it's something that he is working very hard on right now with what he has in front of him, this will give him another tool to make this town safer. And so, I'm sort of hoping that the people, and I get the concern, I don't want to get a ticket either, but I also want to see the town be safe for people. And we have consistently, and I, I don't know how many months we've gone without this coming up, had people calling our office, asking for signs, asking for help. This will help.
Is there any other discussion on the article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Motion carries.